We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graeb.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Orla.
Here.
Councilmember Ruck Regal, I'm sorry, yes, Regan Bach. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. After establishing that a quorum was physically present, we need to read the following notice. A notice was received by a member of the city council in accordance with rules established in ordinance number 16142, and the member will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the member's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by the member to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council and the presiding officer and shall declare the requesting member present. Councilman Ruck Regal was on the line right now, and I'm seeing no motions, so we will consider Councilmember Ruck Regal present. Councilman Ruck Regal.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to ask everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk speaking). Awareness Day if those folks want to meet me at the center podium. nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas in January of 2013, Hadiah Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just two weeks later, should be now celebrating her 21st birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiah and 96 Americans whose lives are cut short, along with the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations designated June 7, 2019, the first Friday in June, as the Fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, chosen because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7 to help raise awareness about gun violence and to honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim June 7, 2019, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Peoria, Illinois.
Michelle Nielsen Ott is going to represent the group I have with me and give us some more information. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Artis and city council members. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action, a grassroots movement of Americans, moms and non-moms alike, fighting for public safety measures that protect people from gun violence. On June 8, the Saturday after National Gun Violence Awareness Day, we, along with our community partners, Indivisible Peoria, Change Peoria, and Black Justice Project, will be hosting a remembrance walk for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is also known as Wear Orange Day. At the walk, we'll gather near the Military Services Memorial Plaza, which is just south of the Riverplex, at about 11:00, at about 10:30 a.m., with the walk starting about 11 a.m. And we hope that you can join us by wearing orange and by walking in remembrance of the 100 Americans killed every day by, with guns. And to join Moms Demand Action, you can text READY to 64433. Thank you, and we hope you can join us on June 8. Thanks.
Whereas each year, the Lupus Society of Illinois designates May as Lupus Awareness Month to show support for the estimated 65,000 Illinois residents who have lupus. And whereas lupus is an acute and chronic autoimmune disease in which the immune system is unbalanced, causing inflammation and tissue damage to virtually every organ system in the body. And whereas lupus can affect any part of the body, including the skin, lungs, heart, kidneys, and brain, no organ is spared. The disease can cause seizures, strokes, heart attacks, miscarriages, and organ failure. And whereas while lupus strikes mostly women of childbearing age, no one is safe from lupus. African-Americans, Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, and Native Americans are two to three times more likely to develop lupus, a disparity that remains unexplained. And whereas lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses, and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences of lupus. It can take years to multiple doctor visits to obtain a correct diagnosis. And whereas each of our citizens are urged to observe this month by educating themselves on the symptoms and impact of lupus, and to join with the Lupus Society of Illinois in supporting programs of research, education, and community service. Now therefore, I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Lupus Awareness Month in Peoria, Illinois.
We're fortunate to have Mary Delir, President of the Lupus Society of Illinois, here with us tonight to give us a few more thoughts. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and the entire city of Peoria. I'm honored to be here today and so grateful for the proclamation. We're here today for one reason only, and that's because of Melody Green, who is Peoria's native child, and she continues to work here today. And she contacted me about a month ago, and Melody's story is so similar to other people with lupus. She's lived, in the sense that it's not similar at all. Everybody with lupus has a unique story. Melody's been diagnosed for 25 years, and she's lived with it, with flares and without, and she has coped very well. And the reason Melody reached out to us was because of her friend, Gianna Randall, who also had lupus and sadly passed away earlier this month from complications. She was about the same age. She lived with lupus for only seven years. The truth of the matter is lupus can be a devastating disease, and the people who live with it don't look sick necessarily, but they can be incredibly sick. It's important to educate yourself, to find out what it is, to find out if it runs in your family, and to get it diagnosed as quickly as possible. The Lupus Society of Illinois exists to help you with that. We've left information, and you can get us at www.lupusil.org, and we are here for you. Thank you so much, and I know Melody wanted to say something.
Just very brief, I'd like to thank Mary for coming down here on such short notice, as well as Stacy Peterson, our communications manager, who I bothered at the last minute, and she jumped to the task. I'd also like to thank my boss, Mr. Lyst, who sees me on a daily basis and knows firsthand what I go through. He's been nothing but supportive since I've been here with the city, so I'd like to thank everybody and encourage you to ask any questions going forward. You can find me in the legal department here at the city. Thanks.
Next, Councilmember Regan Bach is going to join me for our Golden Apple Award winner proclamation, and if our superintendent would like to join us as well, we'd be honored to have you up here with your team. And I think we have a couple other special guests that are gonna come up with.
Whereas tonight, we recognize Lindbergh Middle School Principal Susan Malahy for the distinguished honor of being named the winner of the 2019 Golden Apple Excellence and Leadership Award for the state of Illinois. And whereas finalists for the Golden Apple Excellence and Leadership Award are principals selected from across the state who demonstrate a significant sustained and positive impact on a school, creating a culture of inclusivity and delivering dramatic student growth. And whereas in her six years as principal, Ms. Malahy has transformed Lindbergh Middle School by helping teachers use data in recognizing student accomplishments, introducing special programs that allow students to take high school-level algebra and Spanish courses before school, and offering online courses to boost student understanding. And whereas the Golden Apple Award also comes with a $10,000 cash prize, half will go toward Ms. Malahy's own professional development and the other half toward a project for Lindbergh Middle School. And whereas Ms. Malahy is the first Golden Apple Excellence and Leadership Award winner to hail from downstate Illinois, a tremendous honor for Lindbergh Middle School, Peoria Public Schools, and the Peoria community. Now therefore, I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize the great work and the historic achievements of Sue Malahy in Peoria, Illinois.
So before we ask Sue to say a couple words, I know that Councilmember Regan Bach has to introduce a couple special guests we have with us here. He has a couple words as well, and if Dr. Karas would like to say anything, she's more than welcome to. Councilman Regan Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's pretty obvious how important Peoria Public Schools are to our family. Couple of our daughters are in the audience, one who will be a teacher at Peoria Public Schools next year, Mariah. And we have two Lindbergh students. Moses has already been there a couple years, and Sam just finished at Keller and will be joining his brother next year. So we personally know firsthand what a golden apple we have here in Peoria, and personally, we're very grateful for all of the commitment and dedication that you've shown for years, and we're just happy to be able to recognize you publicly. And I think next time, maybe Moses stands behind me, right?
Well, I want to say thank you. It's truly been an honor. The recognition is certainly appreciated, but it is truly also an honor to come to Lindbergh each and every day and work with the students and families and the staff that I do each day. Very, very blessed, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Mrs. Malahy. Dr. Bell and I are here to, you know, just support her and let her know that we really appreciate the work, and she's the real deal. I mean, she's an amazing principal, and she knows what to look for, and she really never complains. She's solution-oriented, and being a principal, actually, it's about knowing what to look for when you get into the classroom. She's always in the classroom, and then she's able to assist with strategies and to differentiate. She knows that not every child is the same, and I really like that about you, Mrs. Malahy, and even if we have to do some things and make some cuts, whatever, she's really a good negotiator. Negotiator, she'll call me, and we'll compromise, and it's really a big deal. She'll say, "Okay, can I have this?" And I'm like, "Okay, can you take 10 more kids?" She's like, "Sure, absolutely." So it's really a big deal for Peoria. Congratulations. And I'll tell you, I've been looking at scores, and when you look at her, the work that she's done with her staff, it's about, you know, the climate, the culture, the respect, the collaboration. You know something special is happening at Lindbergh when you're seeing double-digit gains and improvement over time, and that's very, very encouraging. So we do have a lot of amazing staff at Peoria Public Schools, and she's just really one of them. Not like Dr. Bell, who is the executive director over the middle schools. He actually works very closely with Mrs. Malahy, and he was instrumental in getting that nomination completed. So I know you've been with her throughout this journey. It's been exciting. She was in Chicago on W, what, W some station in Chicago. So, Dr. B, would you like to congratulate her also?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I promise I'll be very, very brief. My boss, Dr. Karas, said it all in a nutshell. She encapsulated beautifully. The only addendum I would add is that Mrs. Malahy is a principal's principal. Her colleagues call upon her for advice and insights, and she's the perfect person to be the recipient of this award. So it was, oh yeah, she gets $5,000 to spend it as she so desired, and of course, another five for the school. So again, thank you for allowing us to be here, and Mrs. Malahy, this is truly your day. Thank you, Mayor Artis, and fellow council members.
Next, we have a proclamation for the Minister of Public Affairs, Her Excellency Helga Barth.
Whereas in celebration of the long and vibrant relationship between the United States and Germany, and in particular, the relationship between Germany and central Illinois, we would like to recognize Her Excellency Helga Barth, Minister of Political Affairs at the Embassy of the Federal Republic of Germany in Washington, DC, on the occasion of her visit to Peoria as part of the year-long celebration, "Wunderbar Together." And whereas this nationwide program, co-sponsored by the American Council on Germany and World Affairs Councils of America, is locally hosted by the Peoria Area World Affairs Council in partnership with the German-American Central Society of Peoria and the Friends of Friedrichshafen, Sister City. And whereas our ties with Germany are evident in our numerous established relationships, Friedrichshafen was the first sister city to the city of Peoria, and the Friends of Friedrichshafen was established in 1976 to foster a diversity of exchanges to support an ongoing wealth of cultural and business ties between our communities. The German-American Central Society, founded in 1928, notes that the German immigrants began to settle in this area by 1830. And whereas Germany is Illinois's fourth-largest export market, and exports from Illinois to Germany have grown by nearly $3.5 billion annually and continue to rise. Top exports from Illinois to Germany include machinery, chemicals, computers, and electronic equipment, transportation equipment, and food and kindred products. Now therefore, I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize the longstanding connections between our region and Germany, and welcome Her Excellency Helga Barth to I have to mention, before Her Excellency says a few words, that for those of you who don't know, we privately commissioned a bronze to commemorate the 40th anniversary between us and Friedrichshafen a couple years ago. And that bronze was finished recently, a little bit late, but there were some issues. But it's on display at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. You don't even have to go inside because it's displayed outside in the front on the Washington Street side. So Lonnie Stewart, world-renowned artist, sculptor, painter, you name it, and literally is world-renowned, designed this bronze, and it really is something that you have to see. It's so symbolic, there's so many special things on it to explain the different relationships between our friends in Germany and Peoria. So it's probably gonna be there for the summer, so I would encourage everyone to try to get down there and see that. It's a marvelous piece of art. But we are so happy to have Her Excellency here tonight, especially to continue to commemorate the great relationship that we have with our friends in Germany.
On behalf of the Peoria Area World Affairs Council, we'd like to celebrate all of the relationships between the World Affairs Council and central Illinois and the rest of the world, and we have a great deal going on. Germany is one of our strongest ties, and most people didn't realize that except for the occasional Oktoberfest in Lederhosen. But the ties are extensive, and Her Excellency Helga Barth will discuss them on Thursday night at the Lindenhof. But join the World Affairs Council for additional events throughout the year. We will celebrate our 50th anniversary next year and hope to have a major program on China to mirror the major program we had on China in 1970 when the World Affairs Council started. So thank you, Mayor Artis. It's been a pleasure, and we look forward to showing how wonderful Peoria is to Madam Barth when she arrives on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board proceedings held on May 14, 2019, as printed.
Seconded by Councilman Graeb. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing no lights. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at the Consent Agenda. 19-149 is a request to approve a location-only amendment for a Habitat for Humanity home-funded construction site. 19-150 is a request to approve the renewal of the Powell Press Building lease contract with Imac and Bolleos. 19-151 is a request to approve contracts to multiple vendors for the 2019 street maintenance materials. 19-152 is a request to approve a joint agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for a project to modernize the traffic signal management system throughout the city of Peoria. 19-153 is a request to approve a state MFT resolution in the amount of $175,000 for engineering services with Hanson Professional Services under Master Services Agreement 16-119C for the Phase II shared road improvement project from Richmond Avenue to Eleanor Place. 19-154 is a request to approve the following resolutions to reconcile completed city projects as part of the Illinois Department of Transportation's MFT recurring review. A is an MFT resolution in the amount of $350,000 for improvements to Wilhelm Road from Allen Road to North Trail Drive. B is an MFT supplemental resolution in the amount of $657,278 for improvements to University Street from Wyndham to MacArthur. C is an obligation retirement resolution in the amount of $2,363,155 for Campus Town Bonds University Street from Wyndham to MacArthur. D is an MFT supplemental resolution in the amount of $200,000 for improvements to University Street from West Forest Hill Avenue to War Memorial Drive. E is an MFT supplemental resolution in the amount of $1,050,000 for improvements to University Street from Nebraska Avenue to Forest Hill Avenue. F is an MFT supplemental resolution in the amount of $30,000 for improvements to Pioneer Parkway from Allen Road to Illinois Route 91. 19-155 is a request to approve a state MFT resolution in the amount of $300,000 for preliminary engineering services with Midwest Engineering Associates under Master Services Agreement 16-119B for the Glen Avenue Project War Memorial Drive to University Street. 19-132 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to solar utility facilities. 19-133 is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A relating to administrative deviations for wall signs. 19-156 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending existing special use, Ordinance Number 17595, in a Class R4 single-family residential district for an assisted-living facility to add two residents for the property located at 1328 West Circle Road. 19-157 is a request- 19-157 is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance rezoning property from a Class R4 Single Family Residential District to a Class CN Neighborhood Commercial District, and to adopt an ordinance, there are actually two ordinances in this item, for a special use in a Class CN Neighborhood Commercial District for auto sales and service for properties located at 314 Southwestern and 1835 West Cattell Street. 19-158 has a replacement ordinance, it's on yellow on your desk, and this item is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an Existing Special Use, Ordinance 14063, as amended in a Class C2 Large-Scale Commercial District for a Shopping Center to add two commercial buildings for the property known as Junction City Shopping Center located at 5901 North Prospect Road. This includes 5726 and 5728 North Knoxville and 5713 through 5805 North Humboldt. 19-158 is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class CN Neighborhood Commercial District for a building greater than 15,000 square feet in size for a property located at 911 West Smith, including 905 to 909, 915 to 923 West Smith, and 126 South Saratoga. 19-160 is a request to receive and file the month ended April 30, 2019, unaudited financial report, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 19-149, please.
158, please.
Councilmember Grab.
152.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 19-160, please.
Seeing no further lights, we have a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilmember Riggenbach. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-149 is the location-only amendment for the Habitat for Humanity home.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this item, I tend to move to approve, but I'd like privilege of the floor for Mr. Andy Diaz to speak to it as well as Ms. Julie Schmidgahl.
Seeing no objections, the floor is open for Mr. Diaz, followed by Ms. Schmidgahl. We ask that you keep your comments, less than five minutes.
1331 Northeast Perry. Mayor and councilmembers, I ask that you reject this request tonight and hold the developer to their original contractual agreement. The developer is bound by the terms and conditions of a contract, four homes on four specific lots. In the request you have in front of you tonight, the city is acting as if they have no leverage in the negotiations and must accept the change wholesale. By allowing the developer to move away from this land, land that was given to them by the city, we are passing the buck to future developers, or worse, never doing anything with this land at all because of a problem that should be addressed today. In the fall of this past year, Director Black told this council that when the city transfers land, he follows the policy as outlined in the 2012 agreement and subsequent vacant land strategy. This is to favor transferring land to capable developers who have shown a financial capability and ability to do development. He sent an email outlining these facts and presented to you on September 11, 2018 regarding the strategy of vacant land. Tonight, he and the developer are saying that they are not capable of handling the development. While I understand that the developer has found issues that they were not expecting, it does not mean that the development cannot proceed. They just don't want to spend the money to do it. I appreciate that this is an unexpected cost. However, that should not excuse the developer of their contractual responsibilities. This is the cost of being a developer. As our elected officials, you speak for the people, not the developers, not the nonprofits, not the institutions, the people. If you allow this change for the developer to not comply to their contractual agreement and allow them to move on to another site, you condemn this block to having another undeveloped parcel not paying property taxes for the foreseeable future. Address the issue today. Send the message that we will do things right the first time, regardless of the neighborhood or developer. Staff should be holding the developer accountable to their contractual agreement, which was four homes on four specific lots. Leverage is the key here. If the developer chooses not to live up to their commitment, the entire $400,000 should be returned and opened up for a different project. Award the funds to a developer that will live up to their commitments. In conjunction with that declaration, the city can choose to no longer consider this developer eligible for participation in city programs. The city has all the leverage in this negotiation and should use it fully. Currently, the developer has $75,000 built into their project for developers' fees, totaling 15% of the project total. Why not take that fee down to 9% and cover the estimated cost? Send the message that if we are committed to future grants from the city, they will fulfill their commitment. Don't accept this change because the developer says they will default on the agreement. Hold them accountable to the contract we have in place, or give the funds to someone who will. It is fiscally and socially irresponsible of our city staff and you as the elected officials to allow a developer to dictate different terms of agreement once funding has been awarded. The move of this project to a site where they were already going to build in the future diminishes the neighborhood density and is a significant change in the infill development. What is the precedent being set in this case for future developers anywhere in the city? Ultimately, if you don't expect better from our staff and our developers, you won't get better. The rules should apply to everyone, and we have to expect our city staff to do more to advocate for the residents of the city and their tax dollars. Hold staff accountable, hold the developer accountable, build the house as planned. I want to take note. I intentionally left out the name of the organization asking for this request because no developer deserves special treatment when it comes to fulfilling contractual obligations. Consider what your vote represents when it comes to enforcing contracts and agreements we have in place with developers in this community. This vote is not about putting up unnecessary roadblocks or red tape, but holding developers accountable to their commitments. Your vote should not be viewed as a vote against the developer, but as a vote for fully developing our city to its greatest potential, a vote for fiscal responsibility of taxpayer funds, and a vote to improve the area today, rather than hope that someone will come in and do it in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Schmidgahl.
Julie Schmidgahl, the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Peoria Area. I'm office at 931 North Douglas. I am here tonight to tell you that although this may not seem as an attack, quote-unquote, on the developer, which is Habitat for Humanity of Greater Peoria, I must take courageous leadership and say that it directly is. We have been building in the North Valley for the last few years, and when we went to the North Valley, we did so because there was a need for new, affordable, safe, energy-efficient homes for people that are hardworking, who want a no-interest mortgage, 1% down for their down payment, and amortized over 20 years, with 12 months of education before they build, education on how to build their home, and staff that support with them and for them 24 hours a day. We began building on Perry, and we built two homes. And then we moved to Monroe. We built two homes on Spring Street many years ago, and one on Madison a few years before we started these. It's very hard to not take this as an attack in that we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of private money to build these homes. Yes, we did get CHODO funds. CHODO funds come through the federal government, and they are meant for low-income census-track areas. And then Peoria has us apply, anyone who wants to apply, you have to follow criteria in order to be able to build. We've always followed that, and we've exceeded the expectations of a developer. We receive about $100,000 to $110,000 per home. We, on many occasions, we can show you our profit-loss statements, but we have to go out and raise more than we get through CHODO funding, sometimes quite a bit more. We do run into situations sometimes where we've had to add maybe some extra landscaping, a longer driveway, and we're okay with that. What happened with 1026 Northeast Madison was we were going to build the house, we bring in our excavator, and first we have to find the sewer line, and there was a problem. I wrote a letter to you so you could see what the problem was. The problem is, is that there is conduit that runs down from Glendale all the way to Jefferson, and Dylan Plumbing said that it was going to be nearly impossible for them to be safe in going under this conduit to put plumbing in. There was a crack in the pipe that we needed to connect to. $30,000 is the minimum that we would have to spend. We are not irresponsible with our stewards' money, we are good stewards of our money. Our volunteers and our sponsors give us money to help us build the houses. I agree with that. And we do go out, and we do raise other funding. But I will tell you that most people would agree that when a house costs about $130,000 to build to $150,000, we should not be using $30,000 or more when we have a perfectly good lot that Habitat owns down the street, right across the street, using the exact same design, and we could do this with a vote tonight. Habitat for Humanity is a nonprofit Christian organization, and we work our tails off. We've built over 155 homes in this community, and we will continue to do that. We want to be in Peoria, but we do not want anything malicious going on. We are not doing anything out of malice. I realize that he is saying, Andy, that we don't want to set any precedent for other people. Right now, we're the main builders down there. We've put almost $3 million in this area. And while it is hard for me to keep all emotion out of my voice, I apologize. But it's because I come to work every day and work with hundreds of volunteers that just, they can't believe that we are getting the feedback that we get from this area for trying to do good. If you have any other questions, I will be glad to answer them, but I will tell you we are there to do good and to help families and to raise their bar in life and help them thrive.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Diaz and Ms. Schmidgahl. LeAnn, I was thinking of Julie earlier today, so I'm sorry, I meant to say LeAnn. I want to speak on behalf of this project, although I can appreciate the lack of wanting to set a precedent where it comes to development, I think it is important to know who the developer is in this case. I think it is important to understand the type of individuals who, short of Habitat stepping in and building a home, would not have the capacity to afford, to buy a new home, brand-new from the ground up. Understand that the individuals who are given this opportunity have to put in hours on other houses before they are eligible to step up and have a house of their own. I also like to mention that prior to Habitat for Humanity coming in and building in this area, I can't remember the last time there was a single-family home put on the tax rolls in that area. It's been decades since this type of construction has happened in an area that desperately needed. And so it is important who the developer is, it is important the individuals they're trying to serve. I'm not sure, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a developer, I'm not sure if you can go in and survey a property that you don't own to make sure that this type of thing doesn't exist before you build on it. Maybe it's possible, maybe it's not. But in this particular case, I would ask your support of Habitat for Humanity for this project, since especially, as Mr. Diaz indicated, they were approved to build four homes. Moving this property from this location to another one that they already own, they will fulfill building four homes, giving four families an opportunity for a new way of life. With that, I move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Riggenbach. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Kelly.
I'd just like to know if this conduit running down, which street is it? Down toward the river? Glendale, yeah, but what is the, what is Morton? Are we aware that this conduit goes, goes all the way down Morton Street? And is this going to be a problem for the development of any lot along that strip?
If Mr. Lewis or Mr. Black want this one?
Mayor, my understanding is that one of the challenges with this particular electric conduit is that it is providing power to the OSF campus, and therefore has certain critical elements to it. It certainly could be an issue for other development that would need to tap into other utilities under the street, but sort of the perfect storm of a, of a broken sewer line with the electric conduit on top of the sewer line making it very difficult to get to it is probably not something that would occur on a frequent basis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Ali.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Artis. I also am very appreciative of the work that Habitat is doing in the North Valley. I support the motion, and, but I'd like to ask the status of the land at 1026 Madison. Will that land then be returned to the city? And if so, what will, what will the city do with it?
Councilwoman, we have not had a discussion with Habitat as to the future of that particular parcel. Certainly, we would entertain taking the property back if Habitat wanted to transfer it back to the city at no cost. In terms of a future use of the property, that I think is a little bit up in the air.
I tend to think that if we were to approve the motion, that perhaps it could be conditional that the land would come back to the city. If Habitat is not going to use it to build on, it doesn't seem that they would need to hold on to that land.
And we talked about that a little earlier, and I don't have any objection to that. I'm not sure, since the CEO's not here, and they'd have, that's probably a board decision that they've not, won't be in a position to make that agreement tonight. But certainly, if Habitat decided to maintain the property, I would like to see some type of pocket park there, or some such thing as that. We've got a lot of community gardens going in, and so I would like to see that property come back to us if, in fact, Habitat decides not to use it. Julie, is that something that you can take to your board? LeAnn, I'm sorry, is that something you can take to your board?
Yes, Councilwoman. We would be glad to give the lot back, and that would not be a problem. We, we will keep the lot up, keep it mowed and maintained, and I could take it to my board, but I know we've already discussed that. We are not about hoarding land that we aren't going to be able to put a home on. Our only goal in that area is to build affordable homes. It's not for, to keep land in our name.
Find out from the board if they would be interested?
And I wanted to talk to Councilwoman Kelly that we actually are building on Morton. And I wanted to talk to Councilwoman Kelly that we actually are building on Morton. We haven't had that trouble on the corner of 1029 Morton and Madison. We built a brand-new home there, and we didn't have any sewer problems there. And we've built on the corner of Morton and Monroe, on both sides, and haven't had any trouble. So this was, this was a big surprise to us because we have built on that street. I just wanted to let you know.
When can you come back with a board decision on how they want to dispose of the property, either as a pocket park or to return it to the city?
I will speak to my board after this meeting, do a e-communication and get ahold of Mr. Black. And then if everyone votes on it and says it's fine, then we will be glad to give it back to the city.
So we'll get something back to the, for sure, by the next council meeting?
For sure, oh, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Ali, please have the floor. Are you finished?
I'll do it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen was next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also am a supporter of everything that Habitat's been doing down on the near-north side and appreciate what they've been doing. And I don't agree with Mr. Diaz's argument. I don't, I think this is different. It's not a traditional developer. Their focus, they're a nonprofit on building affordable housing, which is a critical need for our city. I do have one question, though. If Ms. Schmidgohl could come up to the microphone, because I am supportive of this amendment. But I do have a question. I know it says in our communications, and then what you've said is that it's going to be the exact same plan?
Yes.
When we move it from, when you move it from 1026 to 1017?
Yes.
The only thing is, doesn't it have a side driveway and garage? And I don't think that will work in the new location.
And you are correct. What will be the same is the house structure. We will have to do a back entrance, a back alley garage. And you are correct on that, so that we don't have to do a curb cut. So I will retract saying exactly, it will be the same exact design, barring that we have to move the garage to the back to allow them not to, not have to do a curb cut out the front.
So the, the plan is to have the garage in the back through the alley?
Yes.
And there will not be a front driveway?
Right, right. And we own the property next to it, and there's a house being built right now sponsored by Kamatsu, and you can look at that and see the design. And we're putting the garage to the back there as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand exactly where Mr. Diaz is coming from. And one of the reasons I moved over here was I was hoping I would have a less obstructive view of the entire audience. Citizens who come here to observe our meetings or to address the council. It is, it's very frustrating, and I understand your frustration. Unfortunately, I know this probably won't make you feel better, but we've run into difficult geography issues before in this part of the city. Director Lewis, you recall the problem we had, I believe that was at Jefferson and Abingdon. And that, that was, that whole area inconvenienced motorists from all over the region and the city for about how long, Director?
I couldn't speak on how long those things have been problematic. We have geography issues everywhere in the city. You know, we're very unique in that aspect where we're building things, and the terrain and geography does cause us plenty of problems.
And what were the problems that we had at Jefferson and Abingdon?
Councilman, I'm not familiar with that. That was prior to me. It's probably when former Director Reese was involved.
Well, it was a lot of fun, and we had to work that out, didn't we, Manager?
There was a very large boulder underneath the street that, as we were looking to move a sewer line, it took us, I think it was, the disruption was well over a year and a half that we had of having to redirect traffic in that area because of that situation. And it cost a lot of money to resolve that problem.
A lot of money for our taxpayers, and we were not anticipating it. So I'm certainly empathetic to what's been said tonight by the objector. But, and hopefully, I can't say that it'll be the last time this rears its ugly head, but it's very unfortunate, and I'm going to support this, Councilor Moore. But we have had issues, on a more mammoth version, affecting one of our major arteries because of unanticipated obstructions, rock formations, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no further lights. We do have a motion in a second. Councilman Ruckregel, did you happen to have a comment on this one?
No questions.
Okay. So we do have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilman Ruckregel?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-152 is the joint agreement with IDOT for a project to modernize the traffic signal management system.
Councilmember Grab?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, I can't believe this is on the consent agenda. I'm not saying that in a snarky way. I'm saying it because this has mammoth implications for our city. And I think we need to outline for our taxpaying public what this means for us and what we're attempting to do to move our city forward. Director Lewis, maybe you're the best person to answer that one.
Sure. So what, the agenda item tonight is for two different IDOT contracts that will help us move things forward as far as our existing traffic signal software is. So the signals themselves aren't really going to be affected by this item. What this really is for is going to be, one of the contracts would be for new fiber optic line to be laid between the signals, controller cabinets, equipment, that type of stuff. So the actual signals that are out there today, you're not going to see a lot of change with any of that. So all of this is for software to get us updated. The existing stuff that's out there right now is 20 years old. So that's what this is really for. It's to update all of the software system to continue with our traffic signals the way they are today.
And if we didn't do this, what could be the result?
The result will be, as far as what you see driving down the road and things like that, you're not going to notice any differences. What we have right now is an aging system that causes a lot of maintenance issues. So our city crews are actually responsible for the maintenance of them. So when these systems are aging and causing us a lot of problems, it's costing us money to maintain that. So updating this system will actually be a cost savings for us in the future, in the long term.
Some funds to help defray the expenses here. Could you outline for, you know, what the split is between the taxpayers and it's all the taxpayers, but IDOT?
Yeah, the total estimated cost for this project right? Throughout the city, depending on where we are, but our share is a very minor portion of the project.
This is in the city of Peoria, and part of it will be outside the city, but it's all in Peoria County?
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Do we have further discussion on this item? Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question for Mr. Lewis. This new software, will it, I know how important it is for our first respond to traveling time, will it be compatible with the emergency vehicle preemption system?
Yes, it will.
Thank you very much, sir.
Councilman Kelly? Oh, I thought you raised your hand. You just wanted to second the motion.
I'm just stretching.
Okay. I'm seeing one more light. Councilman Grab?
Yes, now, please elaborate on what Councilman Euler just asked. What, how does that affect our emergency vehicles going from point A to point B?
Everything that we're putting in today, none of that's going to change as far as what our emergency services are providing. So the things that are put in today, sometimes we have preemption in some of the intersections. So when emergency vehicles are coming through there, we can preempt those signals to allow our vehicles to get through there without having to stop. All of that will continue the way it is today. So none of that will be affected by it.
So this is an upgrade of the software that is currently doing such things as that, helping to move our emergency vehicles quicker through the city? And there are probably, probably it wouldn't be a bad idea, it would be a good idea, I think, for us to know where we has, have, as Councilman Seer pointed out, our ability to change the signals. Can you give us that information sometime, where in the city that is, on a grid or something of that sort, showing our streets?
Yeah, we can definitely do that. Now, this is, this is 226 intersections that will be affected by this item. So all of those aren't affected in the way you're saying, but we can definitely get that information to you.
Yeah, so in other words, this will affect certain paths that the emergency vehicles take as they make their way through the city from call, from when, when they're called out, correct? Like our fire trucks?
Yes.
Ambulances?
I don't have that list with me to tell you. I have the list of all the 226 intersections, but which ones of those are affected by the preemption, I'd have to get that information for you.
And when do we, when do we phase the signals? Is that when we have the fire department called out or other times?
Could you repeat that again? I'm not sure if I understand.
When do we find it strategic to do what Councilman Seer touched on and allow our signals to be changed in terms of their normal sequencing to allow emergency vehicles to move more rapidly through the city from point A to point B? Is that a call-out at the fire department or what?
Those decisions are made with fire departments' recommendations, as well as our own city staff, the engineering department, and the traffic engineer, Stoffer. Everybody would be involved in that type of decisions.
And we're able to get that information, Manager? Because I think we're interfacing with the police department, whether with the fire department, at the very least.
The, the traffic signal preemption is really for the, the fire department's vehicles to be able to, to make sure that they can get through those intersections. We have that list. We can prepare that for you and send that back out to you so you can see it. I think we had a capital budget project this year where we're upgrading a few more signals, so we'll make sure that we let you know what all those intersections are.
Then do we preempt them? Is this something that happens each and every time?
It, it will happen if the, there's a need for the fire department to get from point A to point B, and they need to go through that intersection, yes.
Who makes that decision?
It's an automated system. So as the, as the, the larger question is, who makes the decision of what, of what intersection we're going to put that software on? But once it's on, it will help to preempt the vehicle going through.
Well, we're installing new software. This is not going to augment our ability to do this. This is just replacing aging software, correct?
This purchase here is replacing the, the traffic signal software. The, the preemption software is a second software that's compatible with this, is what we're doing. So, yes.
So we're able to get that information on where that, I see the fire chief is here. Are you able to add anything to this? I mean, I'm for this, but I'd like our taxpayers, and I certainly think we all need to know, what this software allows us to do.
The software would just be an add-on to the preemption system that we already have. I mean, what's working now in the preemption system of the city is we choose the intersections, you know, at the beginning of the year, whenever we start to put these things in. We do that by a selection process of getting our fire trucks, you know, through major intersections where, you know, there's a lot of traffic congestion, those types of things. So really, this will just be the ability to upgrade that system and make sure all these systems continue to work in the future. You know, as the software itself gets older, it's harder to talk to it and, and it will just help, you know, move that system along.
Are you able to tell us where this is used?
We, I can tell you, I mean, I have a list of every intersection that has a preemption system on it. I'll be more than glad to send it to the council. Like I said, I can get it electronically for you and just have it sent to you. But yes, we have a layout of every one of them.
Chief, how is it activated, this preemption?
It's activated by, we, each one of our fire trucks that have it in it, not all of them do, it depends on where we're at in the city. As it pulls up to the intersection, what it does is, for safety purposes, it's read from the fire truck, when emergency lights are on, it activates the system. It clears, if we want to turn left, we turn on the turn signal and it will clear that area out so we can actually turn right or left or go straight. So really, it's a safety feature on the truck itself, talks to the intersection, and clears those intersections out for us and stops everybody else to make it a safe crossing. The one thing that it doesn't do is it doesn't preempt the walking cycle. So they don't want to run over people in the intersections, obviously. So once it clears, it will clear the lights for us and do that.
Fire trucks that we buy, very sophisticated, very expensive pieces of equipment. And this is one of the things that they're able to do as they approach these intersections. And this new software is going to replace aging software that's going to be even costlier to replace if we let it go, continue to deteriorate. Thank you.
Councilman Seer, did you have another?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment to Mr. Councilman Grab. Like the chief said, it works like GPS. When they enter the address in the truck, it talks, antenna, the truck talks to all the lights, basically. It comes at the, at the additional cost. So that's why, correct, Mr. City Manager? This is not included in the upgrade we're going to do. That would be an additional cost to buy this GPS system. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm seeing no further lights. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-160 is the request to receive and file the month ended April 30th an audited financial report.
Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this just for a couple housekeeping items. If you notice on the new, on the yellow sheet, the conditions are, there's two less. We were reflecting the ownership changes at Junction City regarding the handicap accessible and the potholes and the number of bikes. Those are all things that are still required, of course, but we don't, can't impose those on the other owner. But we did not receive the final elevations on the new buildings as, as required. So we're, I'm just adding a condition that will be, quote, "The design and materials to be, will be reviewed and approved administratively." So very straightforward. This is just a continuation of the great work that the Kazams have done previously at Junction City, and we look forward to this as well. And like I say, just basic housekeeping here. Thank you. Move for the approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Is there a discussion on this item? I'm seeing no lights. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
19-160 is the request to receive and file the month ended April 30th an audited financial report.
Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, just a few questions on our, our finances. Number one, year 2018 audited financial report, when can we expect that?
Thank you, Councilman. Maybe what I'll do is I'll turn the floor over for these questions to our finance director, who's here, and he can tell you a little bit more. He's intimately involved in the audit, and we'll let Director Scroggins talk to you about that.
Thank you.
This is one I, okay. Our orders are currently working here now and doing their fieldwork. Anticipate that the fieldwork will be ending probably the middle of June. We are looking, targeting July 31st to have a complete report done, but that's, it may be the first of August. Typically, we're done by, typically, we're done by June 30th with the changing computer systems. It's taking a little longer to tie everything together, but it's coming along, and hopefully we'll have it by the first of August.
Okay, thank you, sir. Second, first of all, I want to applaud all your work and your staff. I know this conversion, the new software's been, it's been a lengthy process, and I know you guys have been working really hard, so congratulation on that, especially when you look at the magnitude of this report. Just want to make sure on your fund balance, I'm counting about 51 accounts. Is that? Is that pretty much accurate?
Correct.
Now, when I'm reading the, the bounds, beginning bounds, is that beginning of the year, or is that big, beginning of April?
That would be the beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year.
Correct. One-one, two thousand nineteen.
I, I don't see in any of these fifty-one funds, our, where's our, do we have one for our emergency fund?
Are you talking about like the fund reserve fund?
The twenty-five percent, we were supposed to have the reserve?
That would be the, the general fund, one-on-one, the first one?
That's the first one?
Yeah.
So...
The target for that is twenty-five percent, which would be approximately twenty-four million dollars, and we're, at the end of April, sixteen, almost seventeen million.
So, we have make, we were at the end of last year. Where were we in that fund?
Right. Well, and that also includes some reserves for debt service in there, so, right, we were, we were at thirteen-eight, if you looked there, but if we back out the debt service, we're closer to six million.
Okay.
So, we, again, would be closer to ten million versus six million. You're looking at that reserve number.
Okay, I will have a question. I'll, I'll be all over the board here. Tell me a little bit where we're at percentage-wise on the stormwater utility, utility fee collection.
On the, on the collection side, to date, um, the last I, the last time I reviewed it was at the end of the year, because we're working on, on the collections, and we were around ninety-one percent.
Hundred percent, that's great. I mean, there's a lot of great things, I've seen this report, that we never talked about. I want to make sure all our constituents are aware of. Example, now, some of these are projections, which in my opinion, we had some difficulties the last couple of years, but this year, we need, we seem to be right on, on, on our goal here. We're, with, with April done now, we're over thirty percent, thirty-three percent of the year behind us. A lot of these, when we look at the last column, if I understand correctly the numbers I'm looking at, everything that is over thirty, thirty-three percent, we're right on target. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So, example, some of them that I'm very impressed by are liquor and video gaming, which was, by the way, you got a little typo there on video gaming. You might want to change on page six. But, we're at almost a hundred percent collection on liquor and video gaming fees. Is that correct?
Yeah, because of the timing of when the license come due.
Yeah, so I want to congratulate you on that. I mean, that's, that's, that's something that we do well, and that, that was very well done. I'm impressed with that. Same thing with rental registration. Now, we're at almost ninety percent. I think that's great work on, on your part. I'm looking at all the parking decks that we have. All the parking decks are about forty-nine, fifty, one's a hundred percent. So, I think the collection this year is going very, very well. I don't know if it has anything to do with the investment we did in the software with the gates we installed and all that, but we're doing very, very well on the collection on those parking decks. I'm on page seven, just to, like I said, I'm going pretty fast there.
And we, we also made some adjustments at those, too. When we did the two thousand nineteen budget, we realized that these parking revenues, we actually decreased the budget, so we are more in line with where we're coming in, so that's one of the reasons why we are where we're at.
Now, the garbage collection, I'm seeing, we're only at one and a half percent collection on page ten.
Correct.
Middle of page ten. Why is that?
Because the garbage bills are done on the property tax, and we collect our first property tax installments in June, or second. So, June, July, August, September, October, you'll see the majority of our garbage fee come in.
Okay. And, because I'm running out of time here, I'm going to go to page, well, just one more question before I go. I'm looking at the, the police and the fire pension. One, we're paying, we, like, our police pension, we paid one-point-one million so far, zero towards our, our fire pension. Why would that be?
Twenty-one. Are you looking at the revenue side, or are you looking at the expenditure side?
Yes, revenue side, sir.
Again, that's tied to property tax collections, and we haven't collected property tax. What you've seen there is that we've collected a portion of the personal property replacement tax that's been budgeted towards these, both the police and fire pensions, and there's still about two million left that we'll collect from personal property taxes. And once that's collected, it'll be sent to the pension funds. Again, starting in Jan, in June, we'll begin getting collections from property taxes.
Okay. Two more questions for City Manager. On the page twenty-seven of the fire station, I mean, that's something that was important to me last year. We had three-point-seven million dollars of expenditures. We spent so far only forty-two thousand dollars. We've got about three-point-four million dollars still available. Where are we at with our new fire station we're supposed to have?
When it comes to, to building the new fire station, we have the project in place, we have the project team that we've been putting in place. We've been trying to finalize the location, and then we'll begin the, the design and the, the construction part of that project. So, the project is moving forward, and we're continuing to plan for it, to construct a new station in the south side.
Last question, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm sorry, apologize for going over my time here, but I'm looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollars roughly in our budget this year, and this is for revenues, two-hundred-and-thirty-three million dollars for revenues, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollars for expenses, four-point-six million dollar surplus so far. How do you feel about those projections? Are we still right on projections? I know it's not, I know the budget's not a straight line. It's not about every month, so, but, I mean...
In the end, I'll give you a, a short answer that, right now, it's early in the year. I have two months' worth of sales tax information. I have not received March sales tax yet, so to come in and say, yeah, we're right on target, and we're, or we're ahead of the game, it, it's a little early yet. We're anticipating coming back at the end of June, the last meeting in June, with the updated trend analysis. I should have the March sales tax information by then a little better, so we'll be able to give you a much sounder where we're at. I will tell you that sales tax numbers were down a lot in January. I will attribute that to forty-eight below zero, and people not out shopping. We won't recover the restaurant and amusement tax that was lost that month, because we're not going to go out to eat twice in February, if you missed in January, but I do, you know, we have seen some recovery in the February numbers, so hopefully in March, we'll, we'll get back to being right on track. Through February, we're about eight percent under budget on sales tax for both home rule and municipal sales.
Well, I just want to congratulate you. This report, to me, looks like we're more on target than we've ever been the last couple of years I've been here anyway, so congratulation, and move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve. Seconded by Dr. Ali. Additional discussion, Councilman Reganbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Seer, awesome job dissecting this. This is what we've asked for repeatedly, Mr. Manager, Director. Thank you very much for bringing this current information, and I guess I should use "current" in, in quotes, because I hope everybody heard him say, the sales tax numbers he has reported to him from the state of Illinois only go through February twenty-eighth. It's going to be June first on Saturday, and we're still waiting for March, April, and of course, May numbers. So, I, I, I just bring that up, because people reference the way business is done in municipalities throughout the state, and I just, I just want to make it clear that we're on top of the game here. We're getting the reporting that we've asked for. We're going to have a presentation here momentarily, but there are certain things out of our control, and knowing what, what the actual sales tax numbers for March apparently is one of those things. So, thank you, Director, and Mr. Manager, and Councilman, great job.
Thank you. I'm seeing no additional lights for comments. We do have a motion in a second on the floor. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Nineteen dash one sixty-one is a presentation on the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one biennial budget calendar.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I want to thank Assistant City Manager Deborah Rathler and Finance Director Jim Scroggins for their insistence in helping us put this together, as well as Anthony Corso and Kate Green and Shamra Robinson from, went to sleep. We'll, we'll see if, if it connects. What we wanted to do is, is tonight, is, is walk through a short presentation about our strategic plan, our operational planning efforts that we're undertaking, our budgeting process for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one calendar year, performance management, and then citizen engagement and the public engagement process that we'll undertake this year. As you know, we had a, a very lengthy discussion about the budget last year based upon some of the fiscal challenges that we were, were facing. Some of those trends we're still facing as we move into this year. But, I think what we wanted to do first and foremost was draw a brighter line between the planning efforts that you, as the council, take and the budgeting process itself, and, and making sure that we were tying not only what you have identified as, and what you will as a new council that, that here has just been seated this past month, that you identify as the, the priorities and outcomes, and that we're funding those outcomes, and that we're building our spending plans around those outcomes that you, as a council, want to see us to achieve. So, as we started to look at, at the, the kind of disconnect that we had with prior planning processes and the, the budget, some of that was, because as we get into the, the planning process, there's a number of items that we want to get done, but there's that disconnect between that and the available resources that we have as a, a city. So, we also noticed that within that current state and the challenges that we face within our planning process and our fiscal management process, is that there's a, a lack of measurement, both in the strategic plan in terms of having overall measures of, of performance, and how well are we moving towards achieving those goals or outcomes that you, as the council, want to achieve, but also in the budget itself. What are we doing from an operating standpoint to making sure that we're achieving the goals that you, as the council, have, have wanted us to achieve? We know that year over year, we have these challenges, that some of these macroeconomic challenges that we're facing, being here in Illinois and with some of the legacy costs that we have to deal with, that are driving us to cut our budgets, or it could be the disruptive change that we're seeing with sales tax and the, the advent of internet sales that's, that's causing that. We also know that we are, we are short-staffed and we are under-resourced. We're at the lowest levels of staffing that we've been at in twenty-five years. We have very few resources to be able to respond to a number of issues, and that also then leads us to the other challenge, which is that there's sometimes a misalignment between our ability to deliver and, on the expectations of service delivery with the available resources that we have. So, what we wanted to do is, is really, as, as we talk about this, is, is reframe the way that we're working through that planning process with you, as the council. What we'd like to do is really move towards more of an adaptive strategic planning process, one that we, we can work collectively with you to identify the outcomes that you, as the council, want to achieve, and then work with the department heads to make sure that they're tasked with identifying those strategies to deliver on those outcomes. Tying that back, again, it's, it's as simple as saying, if, if, if you, as a council, are saying that public safety is important, that we are working towards developing measures of success that we could point to when it comes to public safety, that the departments that are, are responsible for public safety are able to then carry out and move forward, so that you know that they're progressing towards achieving that. Ultimately, then, we would work with the department heads to work on budgeting for, to deliver on those strategies and those results, and that we tie that directly back to those outcomes. And that's really the look behind this, is to, as I said before, is to draw that bright line between the planning efforts that you, as the council, make and our budgeting process. To aid you in that, we've been working with the departments and, and we'll have, we're, we're almost at the point where we can roll these out. We should have them done for you in a, in a, about a week or two, is that we have, we have operational plans and business plans that have been laid out by each one of the departments. We work through a consistent template where we're working off of that, to define and really state what each department's statement of direction is, who are their customers that they serve, what are some of those external and internal factors that are, that are affecting and challenging the department or providing opportunities for the department. But then also, we ask the department heads to, to work on defining what are their outcomes that they want to see at a department level, and then what are those key indicators to achieve that success at a department-wide level? So, if you think about it, we're going to have a strategic plan, try and work towards building a strategic plan with you that is, that is laid out towards defining what are the outcomes for the city that you want to see achieved, tying that into how the, how the departments are delivering their services with measures along the way for both that are aligned that we can work through. The third step in that process, then, is moving into how we would budget, and really here, what we've looked at as, as far as talking about best practices, is moving away from kind of across-the-board cuts to the budget, or looking at what we can do, saying we're going to cut, line staff five percent and, and support staff ten percent, but instead looking at saying, all right, we're going to pivot towards, instead of cutting budgets, let's look at what we can do to fund programs with the available resources that we have. Then look at aligning those budget proposals from the council's perspective with those strategic goals that you would lay out. We would evaluate those on a programmatic basis against one another, and then ultimately we would fund based upon the outcomes to construct the budget and the spending plan for the next couple of years versus just funding from, on a departmental basis. And then lastly, within this context of it, is the performance management side, and that's measuring and making sure that we're building a, a, a system of measures that were, are aligned with those strategic goals, that we can measure our progress and making sure that we're working towards achieving the results that you, as the council, want to see, want to achieve, that we're defining that, putting it into a dashboard. We have the system in place with the Invisio software, where you're receiving the current strategic planning reports out of that, where we can build that dashboard and have that in place and, and publicize that on a, on a regular and recurring basis. And then we'll be ensuring that, that if we, if we're not meeting our milestones, that we identify what are those resources that we may need to meet those milestones. In addition, I think that there was some request from Councilwoman Jensen about what we would be doing on the citizen engagement side, and, and on that front, what we've, we'd like to do is, again, I think that we've, we've seen people have reacted positively to the Peoria Budget Challenge, that we'll revise that, make it a little, try and reframe it a little bit this year as we look at that. We have a group of business leaders that have agreed to, to look over our budget, and we'd like to convene that business committee to, to really look at providing some suggestions from the business community about what they see that are some of our larger economic macro challenges that we're facing, and then what we can be doing to address that going forward. We'd also like to do, we, we utilized, I think, to great success, as a public input device, the Planned Peoria website when we were asking and soliciting input from the public about the riverfront planning process. We've talked with the company that provided that service for us about using that to provide input into the budget process for us, for the public as well this year, so we'll utilize that. We'd like to get a budget mailer out to raise awareness of the budget and, and the issues that we're facing, and garner and solicit some input from the council, or from the, from the community. And then ultimately, then, the last piece would be having one public budget workshop where we can try and pull all of this together and hear from the public at that, at that meeting as well. I think we saw that the effectiveness of having multiple meetings and multiple workshops, we had, ended up having more staff at those meetings than we actually had the public. So, this is trying to look at, at ways that we can do this differently to reach out to the public than what we've done in the past. So, how would we approach this differently from a calendar perspective? What we'd like to do is, we've been, as far as background, we've been looking at trying to select a strategic planning facilitator. We, we've got a, a shortlist of candidates. We had an RFP out on the street, and, and we've got three, I think, that we're, we're in the process of interviewing. We've also been working on some of the, the budget pre-work to develop the, the budgeting for outcomes process that we've talked about, and as I mentioned, we'll have the operational plans from the departments to you in early June, I think. So, in June, we'll be continuing with the training. So in June, we'll be continuing with the training on this process, this budgeting for outcomes process with the staff. We would then hope to host, by the end of June, a joint strategic planning process where we can work with you to define what those outcomes are and what those key strategic outcomes are that you'd like to see the city being involved in. Then we'll have outcome teams that'll be established, working towards defining what are those key objectives, and what are those performance indicators that we're trying to achieve for each one of those outcomes. We'll have the operational dashboard will be rolled out, and then we'll also in June roll out the Peoria Budget Challenge. In July, we would be working to try and make sure that we had the input from the community on the budget itself and the outcomes. Make sure that in July, we would get that mailer out to people. We would convene the budget committee, making sure that the business community budget committee was convened and had an opportunity to meet, and then we'll have the departments starting to do their work of where they start to break out by services and by, instead of focusing on their department, but focusing on the services they deliver and the programs that they run, crafting their budget offers. We'll have the public budget workshop, and then we'll come back to you, and I think what we want to do after that is, is take all of that public input, have a second workshop with you as the council, and come back and say, here's what the public has said is important, here's the input we want to receive from you, and we want to validate that we're moving in the direction before we craft a spending plan. Then as we move into August, that's when we'll start crafting that spending plan, that operating and capital budget spending plan, and then you know what we do. Then we'll provide you with the overall recommended budget and submit that to you. We'll have, at that point in time, we'll have the first quarterly review of our operating performance measures done, and then we'll start deliberating on the budget to work that through till its conclusion. And so that kind of runs through everything that I wanted to cover. The goal would be, I think, that we would try and make sure that we get everything landed by the end of October. It's always, you know, try and aim high with that and see if we can make that time and be done. In your packet, you have a, this is a little tougher to read, but we have a kind of everything all mapped out for you in a calendar, and you could look at that as well. But I would be happy to answer any questions, as the council may have.
Questions for the manager. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I see on the front of our agenda that we are, we have not yet have a date set for the Affordable Housing Policy Session, and that is important where this budget cycle is concerned, because anything that may come out of there may have to be included in here.
That's a great question. We, I think what we'd like to do is possibly look at the third week in June for a policy session. We have a, I think, what we'd like to do is look at, I think we have two items that we want to cover. One would be the Affordable Housing component, and then I think we have some other information, I think some recommendations from the Downtown Advisory Commission. So we'll work to get that scheduled and get that out for everyone so that we know.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. City Manager, for bringing, and Assistant City Manager, for bringing this forward. And I'm a little disappointed that we're starting so late, but I am happy to see that this proposal will include community engagement and opportunities for that. Of course, I'd like to see hopefully a little bit more. I think just having one meeting, especially in July, is difficult. A lot of people, that's when they vacation and they're not in town, so I'm hoping, I mean, even when we did the meetings for developing the riverfront space, which you keep referring to that were successful, you know, I think we had more than one, so people have an opportunity to attend it, because sometimes you have a conflict and other things. So I'd like to see us have more than one date. I mean, I'm not opposed to having it just in a central location, since we didn't get great turnout over the last few years when we went all over the city, but I do think we need to have more than one meeting for community input. I also, in addition to citizens being able to give input online through the planpeoria.com, you know, we do have a lot of citizens that either don't have access to computers or don't use them for, you know, different reasons. So I think we have to still be able to give them an opportunity to provide input through paper, through some kind of surveys. I know in the past, some, we provided those. Maybe we can distribute them to churches, to neighborhood organizations, you know, to SEUC, to different groups, but I think that component still should be included. I'd also like to see additional stakeholders involved in this committee. I'm not sure who selects the business committee and who the representatives are. I think it would be helpful to have some average citizen representation on that committee, maybe somebody from the League of Women Voters. I would like to see that expanded, so it's not just the business leaders giving us input. I'd like to have input from others as well. What else? I had a couple other comments. And one thing, and I don't, it's not incorporated here, and I do think it would be helpful if the council, if there was some kind of priority-based system put in, you know, when we look at all these items that we have to, that are in conflict and we have such a limited budget, if, once we have a list of what everything is, will this procedure then contemplate us ranking what our priorities are?
The intent behind this is to do just that. The intent behind this is to define what are those outcomes, and then have you prioritize what are the outcomes that are most important to you. As we then develop a budget and taking a snapshot of this budget that's based on programs, that allows you to look at the programs that are most important to you, and then we can start looking at making the decision based upon that. So that's the entire intent behind this, is that you're focused on the outcomes that you're trying to achieve, whether you say public safety is the most important thing, or it's transportation, that then you can have some relative ranking between the two about what's most important and where should the dollars go.
I think that's an important component that maybe our past budgeting process hasn't included. So I welcome that, and I advocate that we have more of that. I do have a question about the consultant and the cost of that. Is that part of our current budget?
It is.
And I guess I have some reservations about going through this whole procedure when we just did this two years ago with Lyle, and we spent a lot of money and time, you know, coming up with our strategic plan. What's going to happen to that?
We have a new council, and I think you are a newly seated council with two new members, and I think it's important for you as a body to now say over the next two years, because we're talking about a two-year spending plan, what are those priorities that are most important to you as newly seated council?
Was that, we don't do it every two years.
We do.
We do?
We do.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that was part of our budget. And so will it be the same consultant, or are you thinking in going to a different direction?
We're interviewing, we're interviewing three consultants right now.
And then that will come back to us when?
It would come back probably June 11th.
All right, so that's our next meeting? Okay. If you give me one minute, what else? I just want to just look at my notes here real quickly. And I guess too, I'd be interested in knowing how we're going to make sure that our community engagement process is successful and we really get the word out. I like that you're sending mailers out, but I know when we did it with the garbage, the changes on the garbage contract, I still get questions all the time that people have no idea what's going on. And when was this change made and our dates are changed? So I don't know, the more we can push this through social media, not just direct mailers, and through the news media, and work on having a thorough plan to get the word out that we need input, so we get as much input as possible. Thank you.
Perhaps you'd want to consider putting us a couple of council members on a committee that would explore and give ideas on the best way to get that information out. I know Councilwoman Jensen has been really pushing that for a number of years. She probably could be a key person on that to help us figure out what the best way to get that information out there.
Thanks.
I had Councilman Riegenbach next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Manager, for this brutally honest review of the process. On page one, slide two, I mean, lack of measurement in strategic plan, lack of measurement in operational budget, year-over-year need to cut, short-staffed, under-resourced. I mean, that's the reality that we face, right? That's the reality that we all vowed, as some of us at least voted for the budget last year, that we weren't going to repeat that, and I really appreciate this. How are we approaching it differently? And everything here is dead-on as to what we need to do differently. I totally agree with Councilwoman Jensen is a voice, if nothing else, for let's get the public involved. The question is, and we've got a table full of folks sitting there, how do we do that most effectively? I think we've all seen ways that leave us frustrated, so how do we do that? So I really appreciate that, Mayor, that putting a working group on that even, because we need, we need to make sure that we communicate, whether it's... Remember when we were voted the most beautiful city hall in the country? There was a great media campaign for that. Let's look at something like that as a replication on a matter that has more significance for the quality of life for our residents. So just a couple things here, Mr. Manager. If I'm looking at this calendar right, we're going to get the, you've got the RFQ out for the consultant right now, and you just said that by the next council meeting, you hope to have a recommendation to bring to us. So that would still mean that in June, late June, early July, we would be meeting with him to do the planning, and that would include having the department heads sit in with our session? Is that one of the things we're going to do differently?
It is. I think that one of the things that we wanted to do, obviously it's important that we hear from the council about what are the outcomes that you want to achieve, but we also need to be frank about the discussion about, do we have the resources to be able to achieve that? And I think that's where we can have that dialogue together, sitting around the table.
And not trying to read too much into this broad outline, but having those, the outcome-based thing, I think, is very intriguing, because rather than just say, this is your budget, tell us what you do. Tell us what does community development do? What do these departments do, and what are the programs, the outcomes of those? So I think this is going to be a really telling exercise, and probably going to need a few special council meetings along the way too, right? One question here though, on public input again, you've got a specific bullet on page five about public input on outcomes. So I don't expect you to have this all mapped out in your head yet, but I think maybe that would be a way to engage the public a second time, that besides having the overall budget workshop, or whatever we're going to call it, that they get involved early as they see what the department heads are showing as their outcomes, what we see as possibilities within our fiscal restraints. I mean, just a thought, but I think, I really like this. I think this is a good roadmap. Obviously, we're going to need to, it'll be a work in process, I suppose, but thank you for thinking outside the box and looking at how we can approach this differently, so.
Thank you. I had Councilman Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Manager. I've gained a great deal of respect for you this evening, especially in your choice of suits. You have excellent taste, but, and I think you probably have excellent taste in budgeting as well, probably better than I, but I just want to throw out a couple concerns I have, which may be unwarranted. I've been involved in a, on a number of boards and whatnot, and we were embarking on something new, and there was a request to say, okay, what do each of the board members think is really important? Which process I ended up not liking at all. The process, let's put it in the context of the city of Peoria, we end up with, we'd really like to spend $350 million. So it's sort of crazy. Now, I know you're not quite going there, but I, and I don't know if this would be applicable in every department, but if we have Public Works, or if we, whatever department we want to choose, we say, okay, a 10% cut is going to cut this and this and this, a 10% increase is going to improve this and this and this, and the product of each new dollar, or each, or one less dollar, equals about this much service. Now, a lot of times we're talking apples and oranges, and I understand that, but I think it's difficult oftentimes to, to really see what a dollar achieves in Department X and what it achieves in Department Y. We're probably going to be faced with decisions, difficult decisions, again, this fall, and I don't really have a problem with the process here, but if we can empiricize some of these things to say, here's what a dollar buys you at the fire department, or here's what one less dollar is going to cost you in terms of service. And I'd just like to say, I'm very anxious and willing to help out in this process. Thank you.
I have Councilmember Ali next.
Mayor Artis, and thank you, Mr. Manager, for the presentation. I appreciate the approach. I like the approach, the strategy. I think it's a very aggressive timeline.
It is.
But, you know, we just have to work with what we have and the time that we have. I appreciate also the SMART goals. I like SMART goals, those that are specific and measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely, and I think that that's, you know, what we need to incorporate in our objectives and our goal planning. But I also would like to see an approach that involves leveraging, leveraging with our key community partners, leveraging with our anchor institutions, leveraging funding with external funding agencies, whether it be state or federal or private institutions. But I think we need to incorporate an approach that, especially with the tight, a tight budget, that includes a lot of leveraging of our resources, even with our, you know, community volunteers and so forth. So I like the idea of performance-based budgeting, and just appreciate the approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Grab?
Well, I would certainly like to think that all of us around the horseshoe, including those people who are recently elected, would have a pretty good feel for the pulse of the public as to what we need to be funding here. Of course, the devil is always in the details, as Councilman Kelly has alluded to, but, you know, I go to meeting after meeting, month after month in my district, and I hear what my constituents are interested in. We just had an election. You all heard what the people were interested in as you made your way through the city. I don't think there were wide swings in what people ultimately wanted, so I don't believe it's going to be quite as daunting as it might seem in terms of getting an idea what the public wants. What I think is going to be daunting is finding the resources to do it. What I think is going to be daunting is finding the resources to do it. And I kind of like the way you conceptualized it, Manager Urick, and you said, what can we fund versus what can't we fund? That's like saying, half-full, half-empty. That was really profound. But, I mean, seriously, almost every position we have in our city at this point, and I've said this over and over and over again, I'm going to say it again, is public safety-related. Whether you're talking community development, police, fire, Public Works with our roads, Public Works responses after an emergency. We've had scores of tornadoes recently. We're constantly worried about what's going to happen next. And so, you know, it's going to be a challenge. And as we approach the time when people are having to pay their property taxes, I mean, we're keenly aware of how much government is costing us. So I don't think it's so much a matter of knowing what our constituents want, it's how are we going to pay for it? And we know we ran into a buzzsaw, and there was some discussion about cutting half the firehouses. We just can't do that. Well, we could, but the results would probably be catastrophic. So I'm concerned that we bring to the council chamber the values of our constituents, because that's what a budget blueprint always is, always has been. It's what we value. That's what we're going to pay for. So, yes, we should have public meetings and so on, but I think all the district people have meetings all the time with their publics, and the at-largest just went through a great election cycle. So it's just finding the resources. Now, Manager, are we up a little bit in terms of our revenues, about one, three-quarters million more money than what we thought we would have? Or is that kind of an artificial...
I think it's probably too early to tell. I think that the devil, as you said, in the details will come out as we get later and later in the year. I think that's why Director Scroggins said, we want one more month before we can really give you a good, kind of, 18-month to 30-month projection of where we think we're going. And I think that's the challenge with it, is we're just... We just want a little bit more time to be able to say, here's what we're seeing. I think the sales tax revenues, it was a cold, cold January. So we're hoping to see that that'll bounce back. We won't get those numbers, I don't think, for another week or so, right, Jim?
Yeah. Typically, we get our sales tax numbers by the... Between the eighth and the fifteenth, so around June 8th, I'll get March numbers. July 8th, I get April, et cetera. So, you know, that's why I think I try to say, as we get to that last meeting in June, we should have at least a quarter, you know, at least a first-quarter numbers. And would hope that I would see that sales tax numbers continue to bounce back from January. I mean, that would be a positive sign.
Manager, when are we going to see any impact on our budget because of changes they're making at Springfield? Do you anticipate during this budget cycle?
Perhaps if they're able to get a capital spending plan done, there may be some opportunities there, where we might see some funding. You know, anything else, it may take another, you know, another fiscal year before we'd start to see anything moving forward, so.
Think that anything major is going to happen this budget cycle? Probably not, in terms of reform in Springfield?
Probably not in the 2020 budget year. Maybe in the 2021 budget year, we might see something. Or maybe the latter half of... Since the states on that June 30 or July 1 fiscal years, when they started, it may be for half of the year, we might see the effects of that.
And one last thing. If the CSO is settled this year, that's going to have an impact possibly on our capital budgets, will it not?
It would. And that's why, as we put in the budget, we anticipated some capital, some borrowing that we would do to kind of kick-start those efforts if the CSO starts this year. If we're not there, where we're not starting any projects, the nice thing is that then we won't be issuing any debt in that regard to cover that cost, and we won't be spending any money. So we'll just have to wait and see on how that progresses as well.
Thank you, Manager. Those are all big items that are facing us.
Very big. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no further questions for the manager and staff. Thank you for the presentation. Look forward to a little bit of a change in the process this year. Thank you. We have a motion to receive and file by Councilmember Regan Box, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Rut Regal.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at regular business. 19-122 is a request to adopt an ordinance creating a separate Fair Housing Commission and a Fair Employment Commission by amending Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Peoria.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may all recall, about five weeks ago, this came before you, the goal to separate our current Fair Employment and Housing Commission into two separate commissions, one called Fair Employment and one called Fair Housing. If you recall, at the time, it was born out of my attending meetings, being selected to represent the state of Illinois, to the National League of Cities Affordable Housing Task Force. Having met with other mayors and councilpeople and aldermen around the country, what I learned was that there were other communities having more of a proactive approach to what we find here in Peoria to be a problem, and that is a lack of affordable housing and greater unemployment in our minority communities. And so, as a result, I convened two committees. One committee dealing with fair employment, one committee dealing with fair housing. And each of those committees, we had people who... From the community who came in and indicated... I presented to them what I've just presented to you. And they were very eager to get involved on a commission that would be advisory to the council, that would be more reflective of what is going on in our city. And I think we have maybe a couple of people in the gallery today who were either on the Fair Employment Committee or the Fair Housing Committee. I see at least Cheryl Boswell is sitting there. So is anybody else besides Cheryl in the room that run those committees? Because of us bringing this item back and forth, the first time it came to council, we had a lot of folks here. But in any event, what you're being asked to do tonight is to vote to separate the Fair Employment and Housing Commission. You're not being asked to change anything. The ordinance, as it currently is, would still be the same way it is when the committees are separated. What this will allow us to do is to provide a city-backed focus on housing, not just affordable housing, but on housing. And a city-backed focus on employment, not just employment in the minority community, although that is where it is most serious a need right now, but on employment in general. Currently, the Fair Employment and Housing Commission empowers that commission to do a lot of reactive advising. What the goal of the committees, and my goal is, is that these two new commissions will not only be proactive in the way that they are already constituted, but they will take a proactive approach to looking at our city from a housing and an employment perspective, which each of them having focus in that area. It is the goal of these commissions then to commune and to share their knowledge about those areas. And to... Because they are all involved with the community, we had Christine Call from Phoenix, now used to be Southside Office of Concern. We had members there who were from ME Tech and PHA and Housing, the Illinois Department of Employment and Securities. And so, these are people who are coming with... Who are regular citizens, who just happen to work for these organizations. And hearing that the city, in their opinion, is quote-unquote "getting serious" about this area, they've stepped up to say, "I want to be on that committee." Now, committee is not a commission. Some of the people that came and were part of the committee do not want to be part of the commission, and that's okay. The current commission members of the Fair Employment and Housing Commission have all been assured that their tenure does not end. If they were selected to be on the Fair Employment and Housing Commission for a two- or three-year cycle, they are still on that... Either one of these commissions, they could select to be on one or the other. One of the council members earlier today asked me if there were some of the current commission members who were looking to be on one or the other, and there are. I believe there was only four or five who were actually active. There are more, but there were only four or five that were actually active. And each one of them has determined which commission that they would like to be on. So I thank Councilman Rut Regal for acknowledging that there is going to be some continuity of understanding about how the commission work on both of the new commissions. So I would ask that you approve the separation of these two commissions, that allow each of the commissions to then focus more intently on that particular area, that would bring the current commissioners onto these other two commissions as they see fit. And then we move forward to be more intentional in how this council is advised as to what is happening in our community, and hopefully be able to even provide some input in the budget cycle as it comes along. There's a lot that these commissions will have to do. You may recall, last time, Councilwoman Jensen indicated a desire to see these new commissions constituted in the way that the former Housing Commission existed some years ago, when she was working for the city. That not... Although she's very young, that was quite a while ago. So they have to update the issues that were embedded in that commission back then. And so, these commissions will be doing that. They will actually be bringing from the community what the community wants to see the city doing in these areas. And I like that, because it allows us not to dictate to the community what's good for them. Rather, as we're talking about with the budget, we're allowing the community to dictate what they see as a need and how they feel we should best address it. And then we can take an honest, intentional look at those... That direction that we receive. So with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Ali. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And although I support Councilwoman Moore wholeheartedly in separating fair employment from fair housing, and having a commission set up to do all of the things that Councilwoman Moore just mentioned, including helping us develop and create policies to increase affordable housing, the ordinance that we're being asked to approve tonight does not do that. The ordinance that we're being asked to approve only gives the commission the authority and the duty to hear fair housing complaints. It does not give them the authority to do any of the things that Councilwoman Moore mentioned. So... And I know that there's been discussions about coming back with another ordinance, one similar to the ordinance that established the Housing Commission that was in place for a long time, with maybe some variations. But... And I will support that when it comes forward. But I cannot vote in favor of adopting this ordinance, because it doesn't do anything except give this new commission the power to hear complaints on fair housing, and then to render an annual written report of its activities to the city council and the mayor. And maybe that's just the lawyer in me, but I will not be supporting this ordinance change for that reason.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion to second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Rut Regal.
Aye.
That motion passes with nine ayes, one nay, voting no. Councilmember Jensen. Madam Clerk.
19-162 is a request to adopt an ordinance dissolving the River Trail TIF District.
Councilwoman Moore.
I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Kelly. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Rut Regal. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-163 is a request to adopt an ordinance approving the Black Band LLC redevelopment agreement.
Councilmember Moore, you're on a roll tonight.
Thank you. I believe that Assistant City Manager will be speaking to this issue. Did anyone... Or City Manager?
Mr. Suarez.
Mr. Suarez.
Hello. Good evening, everyone, Mayor and councilmembers. Before you is the... For your considerations, a redevelopment agreement. And so, for many of you, mainly most who are new, we use that term redevelopment agreement to refer to projects that are within TIF districts that are seeking to get some incentive for the development they do. So historically, I mean, the past five years, we've done 21 of them. About two-thirds of them have been in the warehouse district. It's really been the... Where the excitement and the development is taking place in our downtown. So before you is such that we have a project here on the southwest corner of Maple and Adams. And if you were sitting in that corner, kitty-corner, you would see the Adams Outdoor Advertising. Across the street, you would see the 1000 Southwest Adams Chick Building, Chick Manufacturing Building. If you look to the... Directly across the street as well, to the east, you would see where Papa Shot just recently purchased their building, assembling of three buildings there. And then to the back of this property, you would notice another RDA we did, which is 1009, which is called Southwest Washington, which is called The Black. So we're in the middle of a lot of activity that's been taking place, and it's just really exciting to share what's going before you. Today, for consideration, is the applicant, Chris Ober, and his wife here in the audience here. If you want to just raise your hands there, show us who you are. Thank you. And what they're proposing on their property is, Chris Ober is serving as the owner of the property, the developer of the property, as well as the business that's going to operate on... In the property. So he's wearing many hats today, and he moves forward with his property to go for and become, which is... Other times, we've seen, is we have different individuals serving as property owner, developer, and business operator. So here we have an all-inclusive project of someone who's applying here for this particular RDA. I also want to share that, if you want to know more about the project, that I steer people to the schedules, because that's where the meat of the RDA is shown. And so, I would go there, and if you look at the Schedule 1A, it's really reflective of what is the total cost, the redevelopment cost. It's 2.8 million of all the hard and soft costs that we have here. And above... That's just for the facility alone for redevelopment costs. You had another $900,000 for the machinery, equipment that's going to be installed in there as well. So again, we're looking for about 3.8 to $4 million is the total project cost of this particular proposal. And again, that's shown in your Schedule 1A. If you look at Schedule 1B, it's sort of a... I mean, great to show it here in the audience, but it's a very attractive look of what he's proposing. And you can see there the facade of the building, and also to the west of the property, it's going to be the outdoor area for the restaurant as well, the patio area as well. And then on the interior, you can see that what they're putting in is a distillery. And whereas the building is starting off at 14,000 square feet, because they have to cut through and make way for the distillery equipment, we're looking at about 11,600 square feet at the end of construction. And so, that's what's shown here in your document. If you look towards, then, the actual development schedule that's shown on Schedule 3, he's got a tight timeline. And as you can see why, the goal is to get this project up and running and started before the holidays. And again, this is a mini-distillery operation. For those of you who don't know, I didn't know much about this well, but I have talked to various people... to various people about it, and so in Peoria, we have about four breweries, and then this will be the first distillery that we would have in the area. And as you know, Peoria at one time was the whiskey capital of the world, over 100 distilleries and breweries at one time. And so, I think it's really encouraging to see this being brought back to the area. The other interesting thing about this, not only being the first, but it's going to be a big tourism draw as distilleries across the nation are, as well as breweries, and so that's another very attractive thing for our downtown. We ask how to make it safe, how to make it exciting. Certainly, a distillery would do a lot of that, and it's just not a distillery for production, but it also includes a restaurant operation as well with an outdoor patio. Again, very exciting. But let me share you Schedule 4 and share with you what the proposal is in terms of what we've-- in terms of the incentive and reimbursement payments. If you look at what the property is now, you have 14,000 square feet of empty building when it was bought in 2017, and as we've shared with the assessor, what would the value be of this property after redevelopment? And the increase will go from 37,000 approximately to 316,000 in EAV. Nearly an eightfold increase in property taxes will be generated from this project. Again, a very good lift in the total value of what we're doing here in the improvements that are being made, and so that's very encouraging. So, what we've proposed after review of the financials of the business, of also of the tax generation from this project, the-- what we've settled on here for your consideration is in the first year, the year 2020, as this project gets completed in, let's say, November of 2019, then we would reimburse the developer 65,000 in year 2020, which is the first year, and then the remaining six years would be 60% over six years. And you can see there, if you tally up the entire cost of what the city is providing and what the city is getting, basically, it's a 60-40 split between what the developer is getting and what the city is getting. And as I wanted to share, oftentimes what we try to do is try to hit the 50-50 mark is typically our goal, but no two projects are ever the same. Projects are very unique, and one example in this particular case is just in the lead-based paint removal is over $200,000, and that's only because it's a food-type of operation needs to get rid of that lead paint. So, oftentimes in these projects, you'll find a lot of costs that wouldn't be customarily in new developments. So, you're seeing, and that's why these redevelopment projects are certainly more difficult to see it happen here, and that's why we have the TIF in the first place, is to-- and all the other programs we have, is to allow for something like this to move forward. And so, that's what you see in Schedule 4. And that's pretty much the summary of my presentation. The remaining part I wanted to say is that of the TIF eligible cost of 2.8 million, and given that they will see a reimbursement of 162, it represents 5.8% of the total eligible cost that they're being reimbursed throughout this project. So, that is really just a summary about what this project represents, and I'd certainly take any questions, and if you have any questions of the owner, operator, developer, he's here as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Suarez or the petitioner, Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Well, I want to tell you, I'm very excited about this project because you know if it's worth happening, it's happening in the first district. If it's exciting and it's happening, it's happening in the first district. And a couple of things stuck out with me about this project, and one of the things that stuck out is that the property was purchased in 2017. Now, what does it say about the warehouse district when someone two years later says, "You know what? I bought that property, could have sold it back out to somebody else," but sees what's happening in the warehouse district and decided to come on and build this project? The other thing was that there are 30 full and part-time jobs, and retail sales are estimated to go up. And what I like about retail sales of food is that that's not something that you can order from Amazon and bring in, so I really appreciate that. Excuse me. And so, as you see the warehouse district building out, this is not the first development agreement that has come through the warehouse district, and some of those early pioneers came in, and we were very circumspect and wondering if this was going to work, and even back before any of this happened, and we spent-- we received funding from the government to the Tiger II grants to redo, rework Washington Street and the areas around, and all that has happened, and the headache that some of us who were around at the time thought it might be. Well, this is the culmination of all of this, that someone has decided to come in and throw their hat in the ring. The fact that he is the owner of the property, the project, leading the project and running the business says to me that he's all in on this process, he and his family, I'm sure, because he's not the only one that's doing this. Sure, somebody is wondering where he is at night. But all that to say that, you know, I wholeheartedly support this project. I hope you will also, but if I could put a little bee in your ear that bringing the individuals down here, once again, we're going to be looking at how do we-- where are these folks going to park? You know, more and more businesses are coming down, and as we start looking toward our budget cycle, we really have to start being mindful of the fact that at some point, we're going to-- we're going to need additional parking, not only for the businesses that are there, the businesses that are coming, the additional housing that's going in down there. So, you know, keep that in your mind as you're moving forward toward the budget session. We are asking our state representatives to help us in that regard, but getting back to this, Mr. Ober, are you there? I can't see you because Caesar is there. Thank you so much for bringing this project forward. We do appreciate it. If there's anything any one of us around the horseshoe can do or staff, please let us know. Caesar's your best friend right now, though, so thank you for that. Is there anything that you'd like to add? Feel free to come.
Just want to say thank you so much for your support. I'm-- as you said, I'm all in. This project's been about 10 years in the works. I looked at three other buildings before purchasing this one, so Caesar's been great to work with, and I'm really hoping we get a vote, a good vote here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. With that, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Kelly?
Yes, I am going to support this proposal. I would just like the council to consider. I spent many years going into what started out as our Development Department, Planning and Zoning, et cetera, et cetera, urging our staff to-- that perhaps TIF was not the way to go, that tax abatement was a better way to go. Tax abatement had worked very, very well in the city before. TIF's not so well. If this particular project enjoyed-- was inside a tax abatement district, there would be a couple of things that would be different. Number one, they wouldn't pay any taxes on their new investment at all. I'm not talking about a rebate. They wouldn't pay any taxes. I really tried very hard with-- starting with Quentin Davis many years ago, and going all the way through, well, Craig Hollinger, Chris Setti, to say, "Please consider tax abatement." When the warehouse district came up, I said, "Please don't condemn this to a TIF." And they said, "Well, what we're going to do with this TIF is we're going to rebate real estate taxes." And I said, "So, you guys got religion finally?" And they said, "Well, you know, we're going to decide just how much to give each person." We're, you know, because at City Hall, we really know, okay? With a tax abatement system, they would be getting-- they wouldn't be paying any taxes at all on their new investment, and they wouldn't have to work through a 29-page redevelopment agreement, which is going to give them part of their taxes back. Now, as many of you know, I'll be here hopefully in not too long a time with the proposal, but I'd like you to consider the difference between tax abatement and City Hall deciding on worthy projects and not so worthy and whatnot. I'm glad they're rebating taxes. That's, I think, why the warehouse district is working, okay? It could have worked better, and other places in our city, I think, will. So, thank you for your forbearance.
Okay. I'm seeing no further lights. I would like to, on behalf of the council, extend our thanks to Mr. Ober and his family for continued major investments in our downtown warehouse district. Thank you very much. With that said, we have a motion to second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Rutregal?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business. Eighteen dash 231 is a request to defer the purchase of the cemental property located at the foot of Spring Street until June 11th, 2019.
Councilwoman Moore?
I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Seer. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Rutregal?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Nineteen dash oh sixty-seven is a request to concur with the recommendation from staff to withdraw a request to amend an existing special use ordinance, number 13932, as amended in a Class C2 large-scale commercial district for a shopping center to waive the parking impact fee for property known as 7425 North Grand Prairie Drive, which is the shops at Grand Prairie.
Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve?
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Euler. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Rutregal?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business?
Do we have any unfinished business unfinished? Okay. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to request that the City Manager, as we move forward into the budget cycle, bring back the discussion that we had regarding utilizing public access to provide the community with information. I recall that last time we talked about that, it wasn't going to be a very costly proposition for us, and it was well worth, on the other side of that, making sure that the community is more informed about issues that are happening in our city, something that can run through on a 24-hour basis or 18 hours or however much time we determine, and update community members about things that are happening in the city. It would be one of the items that could be used to inform folks about budget hearings, about activities that are going on in our riverfront, about any number of things that are happening in our city, and we are just not communicating to everyone as best we can with a minimum cost. And so, what I'd like to see come back before the budget hearings start is a outline of how that could work, whose responsibility it would be to update that information. Technically, we're doing it now on our Facebook page and on our website, but everyone is not on Facebook. Everyone doesn't go to our website, but pretty much a lot of people watch television, and so I would like to be able to communicate to our constituents in a more efficient manner. I've talked about this for the last few years, and it started with Fitch and Starts. I understand we have a budget concern, but I believe what this would cost is well worth the cost if you're keeping your community more up-to-date about what's going on in the community. Is that something that we could bring back prior to the budget cycle? Thank you.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of update requests. Where do we stand with the current status of the Fitch study?
Thank you. The consultants had gave us a draft report that was circulated to the Fire Department and to David Tuttle. We send our comments back to them, and we should have the report by the end of this week.
Thank you. And second thing is, the last meeting I had asked for and an update by this meeting of the loans that we've given out of the loan program, and it seemed like the response to that was that that shouldn't be a problem, and I haven't seen anything since the meeting.
We'll get you something tomorrow on that in terms of the report.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have a follow-up. I think at the last meeting, I asked for a report back on the impact of the cost of the-- of the city's work with dealing with the flood and how that was going to impact our budget.
We don't have any of that data yet. As soon as we're able to compile it, we'll get you a report back on what those costs are, so.
Do you know what, like, an estimate of when that would be?
It'll probably be-- the best guess, since we still are in the midst of the flood and there's a giant storm about ready to hit us tonight, we're probably looking at the end of June before we can get a good handle on what those costs are. The way things are progressing right now, we may have the flood wall up through the end of June, so we won't have any of the cleanup costs until that wall comes down.
I guess in the interim, could you at least give us an update of maybe what we've spent so far?
Sure.
And it can just be, you know, by an email if that's easier.
Sure.
Okay. I'd appreciate that.
Any further unfinished business unfinished? Madam Clerk.
We would be at new business?
New business? Councilman Grab?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly want to thank our local television stations, especially our CBS, ABC, and NBC affiliate stations for preempting normal coverage to give our citizens in their viewing area, not just the city of Peoria, all the updated information in reference to all the storms that we have had, possible tornadoes. And that's been going on probably for the past several weeks, and it looks like with the current pattern we have in place, it's going to go on for another couple of weeks. This is going to continue to have an impact probably on our budget, Mr. Manager, and I believe our city staff is prepared in case that we have, you know, some emergency here in Peoria. Public Works, Police, Fire, keeping our eyes to the sky. It's important that we do that, and I'm just amazed. I mean, they kept with the storms, and they did not go back to regular programming. So, in an era when it would appear that our media is just interested in profits, our newspaper and our TV stations continued with live coverage to ensure that we had, if something bad happened, a minimum loss of life. And what's particularly difficult, of course, is when these storms come out of a dark night, when people are asleep or when they can't be seen. So, for the next couple of weeks, we need to be on alert, and for that matter, all during the year. We all remember when we had a tornado November 17 several years ago, an unlikely time, that hit a neighboring community of Washington and happily missed Soldier Field when people were told to take cover. So, living where we are, there are dangers, and I hope all of our citizens take it seriously tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the lighter side, many, many moons ago, when Councilman Euler was only 10, I used to play for the St. Louis Blues. Right now, it's Stanley Cup Championship Playoff right now with the St. Louis Blues being-- playing the Boston Bruins. So, unfortunately, they lost the first game last night. Game two is tomorrow night, so please be watching and praying for our St. Louis Blues, whose organization has spent many dollars in this community in the past. So, go Blues.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is going to require follow-up meeting with the manager--
I think this is going to require a follow-up meeting with the manager, but I want to pitch this out there publicly so that we can start thinking about it. It may be a strategic planning discussion, but as we talked about this, adding an additional commission tonight, and I have some concern at the effectiveness of these commissions. In the time that I've been on the council, we have given no direction to many of them. They've given no feedback to us. As Councilwoman Moore mentioned, there are very few active members on Fair Employment Housing Commission. As Councilwoman Jensen mentioned, we just created another commission that I am concerned that there's some ambiguity in what exactly responsibilities are and what we are going to expect of them and what they're going to deliver. And I think that we, that these are groups that are doing our business, and they're doing the citizens' business. And I think that we need to come up with some type of plan on how we're going to benchmark their effectiveness and hold some accountability, not just for the commission, but for us. What do they need from us? What are we delivering to them? And how can we make that a much more effective tool for the city? Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was an item on our desk tonight that I think it bears mentioning. I don't believe we're going to meet again before this group has their walk. It's a Wear Orange Remembrance Walk on June the eighth, from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty on the riverfront. It, it's, it says, "Please join us as we walk for gun violence awareness." It is not lost on anyone, I'm sure, in this, in this room, what is happening in our community. That is something that, with the loss of Jeremiah, Jeremiah recently, that, the four-year-old, that it is something that, at least in my community, keeps us awake at night, wondering how we can stem the tide of some of the things that are happening. And so, if you're listening and you are also concerned, I would encourage you on Ju-, on Saturday, June eighth, at ten-thirty, to come to the riverfront, wear your orange, for the Wear Orange Remembrance Walk. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no further lights. Any more new business? Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and we do not have any cards.
I don't have any cards. If there's anyone here that would like to address the council, they're welcome to do so. Please mark down this date. Madam Clerk?
We have an executive session?
Mr. Leist?
Yes, Your Honor, we do have an executive session pursuant to Section two C-two of the Open Meetings Act, which exempts discussions relative to collective bargaining matters.
Okay, we have a motion to go into exec. Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously, and we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruckregal?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously as well. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson in this listening audience, WCBU, as well as Cable Channel Twenty-two. Everybody, please beware of impending storms coming into the area, and this meeting is adjourned.